All right. We'll call the meeting to order, that can sound very loud. And we'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would you please do the roll call for Cindy?
Here.
Cassie?
Here.
Ben Burgos, myself, here. Don?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Holly?
Here.
Roland?
Present.
We have staff here, but we do not have any visitors here, so I'm assuming we don't have anybody signed up.
Nobody's signed in.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna skip right down to number five, approval of the agenda, and entertain a motion to approve, revise, or remove items as needed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, do we have scheduled presentations?
No scheduled presentations.
No scheduled presentations. Boy, our meeting is gonna be short tonight. All right, I look forward to next month hearing from student council and hearing some of the things that are going on. So, I know that it's been a busy, busy month, and I know they've been really busy. So, we'll move on to old business. And we have policy number 503, 520, 521, and 526 that are up for a second reading. And we will need to approve those. Can we approve them all at once, or do we need to divide them?
Yeah, we're gonna approve them all at once.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the policies, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Unless somebody else pulls one out of there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion about these policies? 503 is for attendance, 520 is student surveys, 521 is student disability discrimination, and 526 is hazing prevention.
These are, we're going through the 500s right now as we go through policies. These are just coming up in the natural rotation. No major changes on any of them. A lot would have to do with just changing in the legislation, or bill changing, or law changing, or something being added there, so.
All right, is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And we're gonna move into new business. New business goes down all the eight As, all the way down to eight A nine. And I believe we need to pull Jordan Moss out.
On the consent agenda, Jordan Moss is not gonna be one of the paid coaches. He's gonna try to be a volunteer coach this year. But is asked not to be, is, we've asked to have his name removed, so. We got that this afternoon, about 4:30. So, we'll take him off of there.
If he changes his mind, we can re-add that next morning.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Cindy, I'm on a.
We'll be seeing, yeah, figure out, okay. All those in favor, go ahead.
Just, there's a couple of resignations in there. One is Nancy Cox, longtime parent professional at the elementary school.
She has been there a long time, yeah.
She actually did daycare for Levi when he first moved to town. I think he drove her to. Yeah, so we know Nancy a long, but she's been in primarily, well, the last few years, kindergarten, worked with kindergarten kids, so. And then some other employees along the way will be, um, Barney was. Most of its coaches that are stepping down, so.
Well, we appreciate all the work that everyone's done, yes. I, before we vote, I, in here is, we're gonna approve the Education Minnesota Teachers Contract. And I just wanna say, as part of that negotiating team, we had a really excellent round of negotiations. It, it really was refreshing to sit across the table with colleagues and staff who really understood and respected the budget constraints. And, you know, it really was a really good, positive experience in, in that contract negotiation this time. And so I, I just want to publicly acknowledge that and to say thank you to, to Education Minnesota's team that they sent, because they really were great to work with. Is there anything else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions?
Aye.
What am I missing?
The nays.
The nays, the nays, I forgot the nays, any nays? All right, the motion passes then. We have some discussion items here, and Dan, I'll let you address those.
Yeah, so, we have, um, pay rates for substitute positions. We've adjusted those as we go on, and oftentimes I'll bring it to the board if there's a significant change. The auditors asked us to have that approved yearly by the board. So, in your packet, there's a list. And what we're doing with a lot of the subrates and trying to figure them in at what step one would break down to be an hourly rate for those positions that have a contract type. Just, is what happened is, uh, this gets done and gets approved, and then it gets forgotten and everything else, you know? So we had to make some adjustments. So, um, this way we're gonna try to keep up when a contract is approved or things are changed. We're gonna try and do this on a yearly basis too. We kinda started that last year, but now the auditor has asked us to have it approved by the board. So that's why it's coming to you in the form of a motion.
All right, so you need a motion to approve?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve casual pay, employee pay rates.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
The discussion on the Type III vehicles, no matter if I jump into that or not.
Yep.
We've been on hold waiting for Ford vans to come in for better part of a year. And we were open to get, well, we can't get nine passenger vans, we're hoping to get eight passenger vans. Ford could get a seven passenger van, so we've had those ordered for a long time. They came in about a month ago, and they were six passenger vans. And now they got anything to do with our Ford company, I think it just, Ford sent what they had. So they've agreed, but we're not gonna buy those. Robert and Michelle then reached out to their contacts. We found two eight passenger Kia vans, um, in Elk River. And, and so we're gonna, we had, we had approved purchasing two vans. What we're doing is we're swapping out, we're not gonna purchase the Ford vans, we're gonna purchase the Kia vans instead. And we'll see if those are prices comparable. And we are gonna actually get back to at least an eight passenger van, you know? And, uh, to get to a eight passenger or a larger vehicle than a Ford or Chevrolet, we had to go to like the Suburban or the, um, that level. Those are, that added quite a bit to the cost, so. Since it is significant, we know we approved it, and approved the dollar amount or similar. I think these are a couple thousand dollars more. But I wanted to bring it back to the board for final approvals to make sure everybody's okay with that and explain why we're not buying a Ford van and why we're buying a Kia.
So do you need a motion?
I think I would prefer a motion on that, yes, let's do a motion and second.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve purchasing Kia vans versus Ford vans.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move into our administrative reports. Are there any board member reports? We've been so up to our eyeballs in strategic planning, and that's the next thing on the list. So maybe you can just jump in.
Well, and it's under, you know, under the board member reports, but strategic planning, we had our, we had our listening session in our first two work meetings. I think they've been great work meetings, you've been there, most of you have been there, you've all been there for part of them. And this week, we're, tomorrow I'll be meeting with leadership team, and we'll be going over setting goals and focus areas and objectives. Not sending them, but bringing them forward to the next meeting for the group to get input on and make adjustments. But, so what I've been doing is working with some of the data that Gail has created or collected, first from the surveys as well as from the meetings, and, and just kinda trying to base, trying to wrap, wrap that into five or six different goals and, uh, to bring forward. So, again, it's, it's, it's rough. It'd be a rough draft of a rough draft right now, but it's just something we'll be, um, but we'll have it for Monday's meeting as part of the meeting Monday for, uh, to kinda see where we're at and see if we're on track with that, so. I don't, you've all been there, I don't know if you had anything to share. Just been really impressed with the conversations and the discussion that we've been having.
Anybody have anything they wanna add? I think that they've been great conversations, so, uh, I, I really appreciated having that community input and so. And I've been really appreciative that I haven't had to lead it and do all the follow-up paperwork that Gail does, so. All right, we'll move on to our committee reports. We have an insurance committee meeting.
Yeah, and probably board members got there or not, but our insurance rate's going up basically about 15%. Not the, the news we wanted to share. And, and it's not locked in the next year, we're not sure, you know, that there's no, I would say, parameters set. But in the, every two years we gotta go for a new bid. And yeah, it's with the different plans to match the plans that we have. Which would be, the best, the best bid came in through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. They had put out for five bids, and I think we got three, um, back. And, and the 15% increase was the best of the three we got back. I don't know if there's more questions on that, or I don't know, Heather's trying to hide.
Did benefits change then? Is that what happened, or was it the experience that caused it?
For the most part, it's the usage that's causing the, that's causing.
I think industry average is about 15%, it's not very good.
Between 15 and 20%.
Yeah. Nah, I don't know if it is that much, but, um, it's, you know, based on the experience of the group typically.
We have a couple really high cases out there that are open.
Yeah, and that, that's where you're probably getting it from, so. I mean, that, that's a pretty large increase.
I know our pool went up 20%. But we're clergy, and may everybody knows we're unhealthy. The most unhealthy, physically unhealthy profession in the country.
Yeah, so I truly, I don't know if there's anything, if there's anything to add on that? Not?
All right, uh, policy committee. We're still in the 500s, doing the first.
That was Heather and I at that meeting. Yeah, again, just going through the 500s. We did look at the 510, the high school eligibility. Oh, nope. Through the, yeah, it's class eligibility. I'm in there in one spot, it said, uh, it took out, uh, four, two weeks. It's just gonna be two events. From one, from, at the start of the season, a student has, has an after the start of the season, they'd be eligible for the first two events instead of two weeks or two events. So the, um, it was kind of a double jeopardy there in that policy, so. Those are the updates there, that'll be coming back around.
So those are up for first reading, and so we'll hear them at the next meeting to approve them. Um, Community Education Advisory Council.
I missed that meeting already, I have a.
Brian and I were there, but I'm sure Heather is going to give us an update on.
So maybe we can just have you.
Well, I don't wanna take the chance away from that, but board members just need.
That's okay. She knows it better than we do.
Sorry.
Okay, we're gonna move into principal reports. Mr. Dopkin, you're first, so I guess you get to go first, unless you wanna pass it off to Mr. Mars to go first.
No, we're good. Last Tuesday, Northern Lakes Rescue brought some rescue dogs in for the student council meeting. They talked about our proceeds for the donation school. Kids really enjoyed that, I believe. Now, currently we have sixth grade up at Long Lake for the next three days. So it's funded by the county, the annual trip that our sixth graders get to take. They're up there with Hill City and kindergarten students, so that's really a cool experience for them.
I'm really glad we're able to do that. It's really important, I think, to be able to support Long Lake Conservation Center, and it really is a gem in our area. It's so important for students to be able to get out and to get that education. So thank you for making that happen.
Yeah, and the county gives the big thanks, I think, for that, 'cause they pretty much fund, I know for us. I think by the state and county schools, so thank you to the county for that. I just wanna give a few words for Nancy, she's used to service as well. I had her 30 years, but very tough to replace that experience, and she's wonderful and given a lot back to the community, so. Thank you, Nancy. Kindergarten started their book buddy, doctor science programs. We get a huge following, backing, support, with community members coming in for, for those events. Mrs. Swanson received an appreciation, or issued appreciation notes from MDE that someone turned over over the summer from the state fair, or the county fair booth. So that's cool, the state fair booth, I guess. So that's great. And then, schools apply for family, friends, neighbors grant, receives dollar to whole play and learn for family members. That's really childhood, and neighbors who take care of young children. Events are held monthly at the ACC. They're growing in popularity, and there are more and more people who have to rely on family members. So it's just kinda a nice opportunity for them to come in and get some resources, if you will. Yeah, and that's really what I got, I'm busy off and running, and we have happy kids.
Family fun night next Monday?
Family fun night next, yes, thank you for.
And muffins with moms on Thursday.
Yep. So lots of things happening. Ball sports are wrapping up for our elementary kids. And a lot of them working hard, winter sports are coming out, so.
One less thing to read that ball.
And it looks like the book vending has gone over well.
Yes, uh, it's, it's, the kids are loving that.
Could you talk a little bit about that? I think I have seen a social media post where someone said, "What's the point of that? Don't we have a library?" And so maybe talk about why that's a little bit different as a review.
Yeah, there's been one or two community members that have been wasting this part of it. But overall, it's, I mean, the smile that you see in the kids, I mean, the little kids are walking by every morning on their way to and from breakfast, and they all stop and just marvel at the book vending machine. We've tied it into our PBIS reward system. And so, instead of offering weekly food rewards, which, you know, our school health committee's talked about, and really it's been a conversation across the country, just minimizing or eliminating food rewards for the only rewards that we're offering as a school. 'Cause we do have kids that love dietary restrictions, or they're diabetic. So food rewards do challenge, and so they don't, they might not even know to get the food rewards, but. So there's weekly drawings, one student per grade level, um, right now, that, um, if they get a catch the wave, which is our PBS incentive program, um, they get the name entered into the drawing. And then we draw one student per grade level each week. And those are probably some of the pictures that you've seen on Facebook. And, um, I actually brought it up, Lisa and I were at a Sourceful Principals meeting last Thursday. Brought that up at our table and was sharing that. And everybody that hears about it just marvels over it. And so it's really, it's neat and unique, and it's something that I know Cassie and myself, Cassie's on my secretary, I've been looking into it for a couple of years, we just didn't know we were gonna fund it. We had a community member, Danny Lurkey, went after it, raised the funds. There's about $10,000 for the vending machine itself. We have right now about two years' worth of books to, um, supply it. But it's just, uh, like I said, when you see the students get in those books or having the opportunity to earn those books, they're, they're ecstatic about it. So it's really a fun, I think it's a nice change. But it's honestly one of the coolest things in our building now, and it's, it's unique. I know Cassie Peterson had that hand in the design. We wrapped it, and it's, if you haven't seen it, it's really cool. It's, it's wrapped in gobbler logos, and it's unique to rural side, so it's an A community.
So it's. So still, children are still accessing the library as a part of this, it's just an incentive program, right?
And I think that it supports our literacy goals, you know? We wanna get books in the hands of kids. You know, actually, at our last PBIS meeting last week, there was talk of incentive value for teachers to be able to get a book for their classroom. So that discussion's kinda still taking place, but, um, you know, it's just another avenue or opportunity to get books in the hands of kids.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. It gives children an opportunity to build their own library at home.
Yep. Yep. And, I mean, it's promoting their seeking, right? Which is what we talk about all the time, you know, especially in our younger grade levels, so.
It's awesome. Well, the kids' pictures sure, they sure are beaming and smiling as they get the picture taken with their books, so. So thank you to everybody who had a hand in making that happen, because it, it really is a great program, so. All right, Mr. Mars, you're up.
You know, it's, it's amazing how fast this has gone. Jim and I are still trying to catch our breath, because it is like non-stop since the beginning of school. And we're already to conferences next week. We have conferences Thursday night and Friday morning. And I can't believe we're already to that point. Eighth graders went last week to, last Friday, to the Duluth, to the, what is it? The Richard Bong Museum. I've never heard of it before until they started telling me about it. It's super cool, it's a World War II museum. And then they took the kids to the Glen Sheen Mansion in Canal Park, and they had a great day. Seventh graders are, um, Mr. May took pictures of all of his bug collecting kids. So it's bug collecting time and identifying their bugs, and, you know, the goal is 25 bugs. And, um, so they're all in the process of that. I love that they come with these little butterfly nets, and they walk through the hall outside trying to catch as many bugs as they can during class. It's really fun to see, um, different things going on in the building all the time. Homecoming, we had a great homecoming week, it was really fun. But we had the food trucks, and of course it had to rain. And we had, we had kids taking their shoes and socks off and walking in the water puddles. We had lines so long in the two food trucks that we had. Jim called up, I don't know how many different food truck vendors, but we were only able to get to there that day. And so the lines were so long, and of course it was raining, and the kids were troopers, they stood out there. And then it started lightning. And then we said, "Sorry, guys, we have to close it down." And they were so disappointed, and we were disappointed, but, um, it was a good end to the week. And then, of course, it cleared up, so we had a nice night for the football at least, and we won homecoming. And then we had, um, October 12th was College Athlon Day, where it was free, um, applications to colleges. So lots of different kids took advantage of that and applied. So it was, it was great. I don't exactly know how many kids actually applied, I know Meredith sent me a bunch of pictures. And then seventh graders, they're editing each other's papers in English class, and, you know, it's just great to see so many different things. I tried to get into as many classrooms as possible in the last couple of weeks. So I was in at least every class twice. Not every single period, but, and so it's just really fun to just see the differences and the learning that's going on, and the great conversations. That's all I have.
I know it's been insanely busy. You didn't mention that we won the stump back.
The what?
The stump game.
Crosby game.
The Crosby game.
Oh, yes, yes, oh my gosh. What, four overtimes? Four overtimes, that was quite the game.
It was quite the game. Andy, did you have something to add?
Yeah, a couple other things I'd like to add, too, just, you know, we had our little bus since last week, but, uh, it's my office staff. Kathy Christie, thank you, they've been doing amazing. Brittany's been subbing bus driving, but her and Cassie and the office staff have been great. I know Lisa's been short on subs, we've been short on subs. So just thank you to everybody with the flexibility and willing to help out when, when hands are needed, so.
It sounds like the whole team came together for the bus accident.
Yep.
And, and people went above and beyond, and so we do appreciate that. And I know that the families of the children who were involved appreciated that as well. Ms. Parkin, community head.
Well, real quick, a side note, you know, that, that book vending machine, I'm, I'm older, and I use our public library, but I still love when I get my own book, like on Amazon, and it comes in the mail, and it's just my own, and I, anyway. So, I'm, it, it's cool, the kids are just loving every minute of that. And so, um, all right, so Community Ed, our new accent is slated to hit the box as of November 1st. We have lots of fun things coming up this winter, including a bus trip to go see, um, two of our Aiken alumni as they participate in the Concordia Christmas concert. So we'll have a bus trip with that, we're partnering with the Aiken Choir. So Kelly Blake's bringing choir kids, and I'll bring community members on one bus, and it's a lot of workout. We have intergenerational programs going, our book buddies and our grandparents are underway. We've got about 64 just between those two programs, about 64 seniors signed up to participate, which is excellent. And then we've got other, other ventures that we have going on to, um, getting those adults in the building age-friendly. There's a grant that we, that we got last spring to kinda open up our Fab Lab and our wood shop. We've had two wood shop classes and an embroidery class, another embroidery class in the next week. The wood shop classes have been a huge hit. We did a birdhouse one day, and then today was a pumpkin box. So we had six older adults that were there making their pumpkin box, and Alan Lenz has done an incredible job of, you know, kinda getting those put together. And the only thing I need now are some high school kids to come help, because it's a lot for Alan to do. The popularity of the class is increasing, and so he needs some high school help. So we've got feelers out for those high school kids to come help, but, um, if you know any that aren't in an after-school activity that would wanna, once, once a first of month, come help out, that'd be great. The Children's Center, so last year, I just kinda wanna recap a little of last year. There was 51 total fours preschool students last year. Of those 51, 41, 41 went on to Ripple Side for kindergarten, five re-enrolled, and five went elsewhere. 73% of all kindergartners this year went and received services from the Children's Center last year. So 73 is a pretty good number. And so, current enrollment, we have 55 in our fours, 28 in our threes. Fours is full, and threes has three spots left. And so that's pretty darn good, can't do much better. And the threes, it's hard, 'cause afternoon preschool, afternoon preschool is really hard for three-year-olds, it's not ten. So those are the spots that are open. Our wraparound, our kids' club is doing well, we have the wraparound program. Again, this year, we have 26 kids utilizing the wraparound, which is about 31% of all our preschool, preschoolers. So that's a pretty good number. We've got about 110 total contracts for before and after-school childcare. Doesn't mean every day, but, you know, at some point, 110 families are utilizing. And so it keeps us, it keeps us busy. But we've got great staff, again, we have good high school staff, we've got great adult staff, and so feeling very lucky with that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that after-school, before and after-school programming is so important for so many families. Otherwise, we have children at home alone that shouldn't be at home at all, so. It's much appreciated to have the staff to be able to do it, yeah, thank you. Guess what? You're up.
Just wanna drop back into the reports from both principals and community head. They do a wonderful job leading the programs that they're doing, I think, and the growth we've seen. I've talked about test scores before, we just send the programming and the options, opportunities for kids to get added supports if needed, and, and so on. And that's really hats off to the principal, and principals, and, and community head, and their advisory, their staff, and advisory councils, and so on. So, um, I think that's a big reason, a big part of why we feel like we're in a pretty good spot. So I think that's a big reason, a big part of why we feel like we're in a pretty good spot right now in our schools. So hats off to them. Shifting gears, contract negotiations. We had a couple that were approved with the drivers and we approved the drivers last time, but I missed one spot on the salary schedule chart. That's why it came back for reapproval to get the right one approved. Dawn mentioned the teacher one, the teacher negotiations went and I could, I'd agree with everything she said. It was really a good process for most sides. We have a number of other contracts that we'll talk more, I'm going to close the meeting for just a few minutes when we're done. There's just some other contracts we got to address. Our enrollment, moving on to that, any questions on that or probably save them until we close? Enrollment update, we're up three students from last month, which again, it's, will vary, three to five, maybe 10 students from month to month depending on what's going on. So last week, we had the, we had a bus accident. And it was, you know, it was as well coordinated as a, as an emergency plan can be. The one thing I guess that, you know, sheriff, county sheriff, nope, he's highway patrol. When the parents got to the bus to pick up their kids, he, obviously they were shook and he just said, hey, you need to know everything. In a situation like this, everything played out exactly as it was supposed to. And I thought that's, you know, not only to our first responders and firemen and everybody, but also our staff. Unfortunately, unfortunately, Crystal was in charge of the bus garage that day. So she was out there before I got there and I made my way out there. We had a teacher, Sarah Shrek, came out, the two kids on the bus were shook up and, you know, I don't know if they got to be a part of the fireman week or not, but you know, these guys coming in with their fireman gear on and mask and, you know, and them not knowing they're, they're three year old kids. They just kind of hung out and then one of the firemen kind of got them talking, they got them off the bus into the ambulance and then Sarah showed up and she works with them every day and was able, you know, kind of calm them down and just be with them until their parents were able to get there, so. Yeah, so, so we're down a bus, the bus that got, was in the accident, had a lift, it was used for handicap students and we had a spare, we have an extra bus that has that capability, but it just doesn't give us any leeway. So Michelle's looking to see, you know, we don't, it doesn't sound like our insurance has that, you know, we'll pay X number of dollars if they rent, rent the bus. But we're looking to see if we can get something that we can lease or borrow just to have a backup in case we need one. And then in the process today, when she was checking with the bus companies, they said, oh, by the way, the bus that you ordered for July that we told you to be here in August and we said to be here in September is here. So we're going to, not a lift bus, it's not it, but so we're going to arrange to get that in the next few days as well. So kind of a lot of movement parts there, but we are looking to see if there's, if we just find, if we can lease another bus that would have, would have the lift capabilities in and so on. We have one right now, it's, you know, we have what we need right now, but there's just no room for error, so.
The driver was hurt or she's okay?
She was okay, yep, they decided, decided to take her in and give her an evaluation or she was evaluated and then they released from ER. So she's driving the bus today, so. So, those are my notes, keeping it short for you.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to add before we? Okay, so I'm going to go through and announce our upcoming meetings and then we're going to go into a closed session. So our upcoming meetings, October 23rd, strategic planning meeting will be at 7:00 PM, it's a little time change there. So 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. October 25th is a personnel meeting at 3:45 in the Media Center. November 8th is a policy meeting at 3:45 in the High School Media Center. November 9th is a strategic planning meeting at 6:30 in Aiken High School Media Center. November 20th is a school board meeting at 6:30 in the Media Center. And November 22nd will be a personnel meeting at 3:45 in the High School Media Center. And it does not seem like we should be talking about November, but here we are.
Here we are.
Alright, so according to Minnesota Statute 13D point 03, we are going to go into a closed session to discuss labor negotiation strategy. We will come out of the meeting, we will not discuss any more business when we come out of the meeting. All we will do is adjourn the meeting at that point.
I think we have to do a motion in a second to go into a closed session.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to go into the closed session. So is there a second?
A second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by the same sign? Any abstentions? Motion carries.